Olivia, will you let me know when you're ready, please?
Okay, I should be ready whenever. Do you want me to go ahead and show people how to, if they're wanting to make comment, how they should do that?
I think this would be appropriate time, yes.
Okay, great. Alright guys, so I'm just gonna show, we are gonna have a public hearing and public comment section, so I'm just gonna show you guys how we're asking you to do this. Let me share my screen. I have a little presentation for you. So down, your screen should look like this. Like this, I'm sorry. So when you're ready to speak, if you could press reactions, it's gonna bring up this. If you'll raise your hand, what, I'm gonna see this. What I'm gonna do is call your name, and I'll ask you to state your address, and you can speak. After you are done with that, oh, I'm sorry. To unmute, press this button over here. If you want your video on, you can also do it with this, but you don't have to. So when you're done, just press mute, and then go back over here and you can lower your hand. And that should be it. Does anyone have any questions for me before we start?
Olivia, thank you so much. We are just all getting so much more IT savvy every day, thanks to you. So we appreciate that.
Of course.
Alrighty then, we will, we will go ahead, we're all here, I think we will go ahead and begin the meeting. We'll call to order the town of Lake Lor, Town Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, September the 14th at 5:00 PM. Having had an opportunity to review the agenda, are there any edits, changes, additions that anyone would like to make before we adopt the agenda? I will, yes.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I think, I think I'll cover all three of the, the changes, Madam Mayor. So, I'd like to, first of all, shift one item from the consent agenda, which is the dredging plan 2021 to 2022, from, from the consent agenda to new business item C. Secondly, I'd like to add a new business item D, which is Resolution 21-09-14. That would be item E. I'd like to add another item E, under new business, which is selection process, or selection of the firm in the process of.
Alright, thank you. Olivia, did you, were you able to get those down?
Yes, I was, thank you.
Okay, are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have one for discussion, though. Public comment is item number seven. It seems to me that we may wanna have the public comment happen.
The public comment hap- happen after new business?
Yes, item seven on the agenda, probably should be item 11, and then push to the closed session after that. I'm just thinking there's so much information in the new business that having a public comment before that may be counterproductive.
I agree with you entirely. So that would be to move public comment from item number seven to become item number 11.
Yes ma'am.
Um, just. And, and then, and then closed session would be, I, become item number 12.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I came in a moment after you started, or do we have the discussion of the consultants?
We do, we do. Just to review them for you, William, we are moving dredging from consent agenda to item number C, the dredging plan under new business. We are putting Resolution number 21-09-14 Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse as item number D under new business. Item number E will be discussion of, of the selection of Town Manager Search Firm. We are then going to move public comment from item number seven to item number 11, and we will have closed session be item number 12.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other changes, additions, edits? If not, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Alright, is there a second?
Diorio, I second it.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
More aye.
Then the agenda stands adopted as amended. Thank you. And the next item is the mayor's communication, and there are two things that I would like to do. And, one is, as far as our invocation is concerned, we are in the middle of the Jewish High Holidays, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, which is Thursday, and Greg Gardner was kind enough to share with me a prayer that is used during that time, and I think it would be appropriate if we use that for our invocation. And so, we ask, may our hearts not despair of human good, may no trial, however severe, inveter our souls and destroy our trust. May we too find strength to meet adversity and quiet courage and unshaken will. Amen. Thank you very much. There is one thing I would like to say in the mayor's communication, and I would simply like to thank, from the bottom of my heart, all of the staff in, in Lake Lor who helped us get through the very trying time of this last storm. There, there certainly was more work than any one person could do, or even that everyone could do. So, we certainly thank them for all their hard work and for their patience in trying to meet everyone's needs all at the same time. We are certainly very fortunate that Dean has shared with us, and he will share a little bit later with us, they now have a new vote, which will enable them to collect the debris mechanically rather than trying to pick it up by hand and barge to. But then having been said, we would like to thank every single person from the fire, from police, from Dean, your whole department, from Dean Lincey's department, David Arrowood's department, every department, truly, for helping us get through that, to that trying, trying period. We will move on now to our Town Manager's Communications. Shannon, I will defer to you for that.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, and also just would like to say thank you for recognizing all the hard work of our staff and how they serve this community and this council. They do a great job, great leadership at the department head level. We have a great team, and that's why we get so much done. Just two quick things, Boys Camp Road, Duke Energy Tree Survey, Commissioner Kilby had asked that we reach out to Duke Energy to see if they would assess the trees on Boys Camp Road, see if we can't cut down some of the power outages. And so they've been working on that. They've identified approximately 45, 47 hazardous trees, and so they have already eliminated some of those, and they continue to work on some of the others. They'll have to work with private property owners on some of the ones that would not be considered within their rights of way for the power lines. So they are working on that. I appreciate Commissioner Kilby for raising that issue, and also appreciate Craig DeBru with Duke Energy for responding so, so quickly. I think the, just the next item is just to let council know that our sewer collection system inspection has been completed by DEQ, and it passed with flying colors. Basically, they come in and they want to see how well your records are being kept, if you have systems in place, and to make sure that you have all your certifications to operate the collection system. And so working closely with, with Director Arrowood, Public Works Department, DEQ, basically came down and shook us down, and Director Arrowood's department passed with flying colors. All, all the, all the credit goes to Director Arrowood and his team. Those are the two items I just wanted to give you a quick update on, that's all I have.
You're muted.
Next item is our public hearing. Do I hear a motion to open the, our public hearing?
So moved.
I hear a second.
Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
More aye.
Then our public hearing is opening, open, now open. We will have a presentation by Mr. Maurice Walsh. After that, he will be addressing the questions that have been submitted in writing previously, and we appreciate everyone sending those in. There will also be, if there are additional questions, there is an opportunity for you to ask them using the tools that Olivia showed you at the beginning of the council meeting. So I will turn, I will turn this over to Mr. Reese Walsh, if you're with us.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you for joining us, and no tux, I see, but that's alright.
No, no, I, I left my, my tux downstairs.
Alright, well, we're ready for you.
Alright, Olivia, can you enable sharing for me, and I will share the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, give me just one second, I thought I did that for some reason.
So just as, as a primer, the engineering report and environmental information document, which has been nearly maybe a year and a half in the works, has finally been approved by numerous state and federal agencies, and one of the last things that we do is a public hearing to present our findings before the report goes into a 30-day clearinghouse, a 30-day hold, after which time we receive formal approval, and we can actually begin proceeding with the project. So I am, we are very excited to be at this point. It has been a very long, very long time coming, so.
It has been. We thank you for that year and a half of hard work, and I must also add, there is a link which you've provided, and is provided in the packet for people, should they wish to access the entire ERDID, all 700 pages.
And I might add that it's a, it's a tremendous read. I wrote most of it, but, you know, if you, if you ever can't get to sleep one night, it's 700 pages that'll certainly help you out.
It can be costly while reading it for, for, with questions.
Indeed, indeed. So the, the format tonight will be a closed presentation. You were, were able to submit questions prior to tonight on the town's contact website, and that will remain open for a week following the presentation, and I'll have a website on the last slide to give you the web address to do so. We've had a number of questions submitted on the website. I've had a number of, of individuals reach out to me personally through phone and email. Most were, were giving me some additional information or context. So again, I appreciate everyone's involvement with questions and with observations, and with, you know, any additional information about your particular situation and system is certainly very, very helpful and appreciated. So to, to get started, a little bit of project background. The Subaquia Sanitary Sewer, as, as we know, is under the lake. It was completed along with the dam in 1927. It ranges from four feet deep to 105 feet deep at the dam, consists of about 74,000 linear feet of cast iron pipe, serves a variety of public and private connecting systems, and you can actually, if you see my green arrow, that, so this was a picture that was taken in the late 1920s, and you can see the actual trunk line there that goes underneath the dam. It was installed in a variety of methods. The first is wood cribbing, and, and based on what we've understand from divers, that wood cribbing is still there. Some of it was buried. We believe a predominant amount of it was simply installed along the ground with these concrete anchors or collars around the, around the joints. So, big points is that it was installed along existing grade. That's going to be a an important distinction as we looked at some of the different alternatives. Ranges in pipe from eight to 18 inches, contains a variety of bins and submerged junction boxes. There are approximately 61 perimeter manholes right now. There were, there were more, some of them have been replaced. And then important to note is that much of the, the location is approximate. We don't really know where a lot of the system is under the lake. The wastewater treatment plant, prior to 1969, there was no plant. The, the waste from Lake Lor dumped directly into the Broad River behind the dam. With the Cleveland Water Act, a biological process was built in its current location due to excessive infiltration from the lake. In 1991, it was renovated to a physical chemical process, and the plant has been characterized violations in the amount of flow, ammonia, and total suspended solids. So, in looking at the system, so this is a picture that you see of the pie of the inside of a pipe about 330 feet from the dam. So this is under one of the deeper parts of the lake. You can see the corrosion and distortion of the pipe. The subaquia system is non-compliant. It has been for some time. The pipes are deteriorating. There is a continued risk of a pipe failure, which would, could result in a no flush order if we're unable to locate and repair the leak. So the primary issues are risk of catastrophic failure. The location is unknown, the line is inaccessible, and the full condition of the pipe, about 14% of this system, they were able to TV. The other, the remaining, we're not able to assess what it looks like, what its condition is, etc. The wastewater plant is also non-compliant. Due to the process that's used there, it simply cannot meet its, the current limits imposed on it by the state, and as such, it has a long history of fines and violations. And the primary issue with the wastewater plant is lake infiltration. So again, this is the primary issue facing this system, facing the sewer system and the wastewater plant is lake infiltration. And you can see this, so this line represents the flow in millions of gallons per day over time, and you can see that you have a gradual rise. So in 2007, a leak was discovered, a single leak that was repaired, and you see the, the resulting drop in, in flow. 2009 was the joint wrap, where some of the, the joints were wrapped. You can see that it continue, continued decrease in the flow, and I'll annoy you, this is not a decrease caused by, you know, population moving out of Lake Lor. This is a decrease in flow because of these measures, we're keeping water out of the pipes. But you can notice that since 2012, we've seen a steady increase in the flow, and this is because the, the measures that were put in in 2007 and 2009 are aging and beginning to fail. So when we look at what we're trying to accomplish, the first is obviously regulatory compliance. We want to avoid the notices, the fines, and the penalties. We want to protect against catastrophic failure. We want to provide a sustainable, enduring collection system, but it has to be financially viable. It needs to be accessible for operations and maintenance, which the current system is not now. It needs to be accessible for users. Even before the moratorium, it's very, was very difficult to get into this system, depending on where you were in the lake. And so one of our goals is to make a system that's more accessible to the end user. We want to reduce influence infiltration, and because of the cost and difficulty, we want a very long service life. So we're looking at components that are, you know, approaching 100 years in service, in service life. So to give you an idea of some of the, some of the items we looked at, there were essentially five. This was weeded down from around 14, two years ago, but there were five that we, we took a very close look at. The first is a do-nothing option. The state actually requires us to, to, to evaluate that. The second is a land-based low-pressure system. This is also called the high-low-pressure system. So if you think about, if, if you had a, a pump at your residence that pumps to the perimeter roads that surround Lake Lor, that's, that is that system. The third is a backshore low-pressure system, and I'll explain what the backshore is in a moment. But that is essentially a system where you, you have a, a pump at your residence that pumps into a force main that runs actually still in the lake, but around the perimeter of the lake. You have a backshore series pump system, which is a series of pump stations and force mains that are in the lake. And then the preferred alternative, the one that we selected, is the backshore gravity list system, or you'll hear referred to as the GLS. And this is a, a combination of, of gravity lines and pump stations that provide a perimeter system around the entire lake. So looking at the backshore, so what we're referring to the backshore is the land that's exposed when the lake is lowered. And so, for those of you who, who are familiar with the lake, whenever they drop the lake to do maintenance on the pin stock or, or, or any other features, you'll notice there's, in some areas, a large amount of shoreline that's exposed. Well, that's what we're calling the backshore. And what we're proposing is that we actually utilize that backshore for the installation of the new system, similar to what you see on the screen. And one of the benefits of this is that you don't have the dramatic elevation change. If you stand on your dock and you look kind of uphill, a lot, a lot of these homes, you see a dramatic increase in elevation, whereas if you turn to the right and left, you see a fairly level, level ground. So we want to utilize that. And the do-nothing option, and I'll be honest, we only look at this because the state makes us. Do-nothing was not a viable option here. It does have the lowest upfront cost, and it basically doesn't require you to do anything, but it, the liabilities are continued non-compliance. It ensures regulatory action. The state and the EPA regularly inquire about Lake Lor. The system is 100 years old. You will have an eventual failure. You have a very high total, a triple bottom line, which is social, environmental, and economic impact. And a failure could result in insolvency of the town and in significant loss of property values to the homeowners. And so with, with those liabilities, the, the do-nothing option was just readily apparent. This was not, you know, not feasible. We had to, to do some sort of action. The land-based low-pressure system, some of the benefits is it uses proven technology and approaches. We can install regardless of the lake level, does provide for growth of the customer base, and it is constructed using typical means. It also can be phased. The liability is it's very difficult from a construction option due to the topography and geography of Lake Lor, has a very high economic cost, has a very high social cost due to the traffic interruptions, requires a very large number of pump stations. For every resident, there is a pump station. And so as you, as you go around the lake and you realize that there's 1,100 residents or 1,200 residences, there'd be 1,200 pump stations. So a very large number of pump stations. Substantial modifications, so those pump stations would have to be installed between your home and the lake. It requires a maintenance program that would be a, basically, you'd have to have pumps on short order, that if something failed, you could respond immediately to prevent sewage from some getting into the lake. And as such, had a very high in operations and maintenance costs. And we updated a past, a past proposal to look at this, and we came out with some cost in, in dollars a few years ago, around $80 million. So this was a very, very costly, costly alternative. The backshore low-pressure system is very similar, except you, you eliminate the topography and the, the geology problems, and you eliminate some of the, the social problems with, with impact to traffic. But you still have a very large number of pump stations, and you still have a very high O and M cost as a result. So this one came in a little less, about 71 million, but still a very expensive system, and as such, was not preferred. The backshore series pump station, if you could imagine the current manhole locations where they are, if you imagine those were turned into pump stations, then you'd get an idea of conceptually what this system looks like. So it has, certainly has some benefits. It uses, you know, existing proven technology. It does provide for growth. It can be constructed during typical means. It, it, it could be phased. However, it does have a, a fair number of, of pump stations, and you actually have parallel pipes where you're running gravity and force main parallel. And so in that, you had a, you had a high overall cost of 63 million. Now let me explain to you what present worth is. So when the state looks at a project, they don't look at just the initial capital cost, but they look at what it costs to operate the system for 20 years. So 63 million dollars is the present worth of what it would take to install these systems and operate it for 20 years. And so just bear that in mind as you, as you hear these numbers. The system that we did select is the backshore gravity list system, or the GLS, and the benefits it uses proven technology and approaches. It provides for the growth of customer base. It can be constructed using typical means. It can be phased. It substantially reduces the number of pump stations. So the, the low-pressure systems had anywhere from, you know, 1,200 pump stations. The gravity list system has, right now, preliminarily less than 20, so substantially reduces the system. It also dramatically improves access to the system. And so basically, if you have a home on the lake, you can access the system. If you have a home that ties into a sewer line that goes to the lake, you'll be able to access the system. So it's, it's much more accessible. It would require the lake levels to be dropped for construction and for O and M access. But just on the whole, this system was the, the, had the, the lowest present worth and, and the most number of benefits. So this is what we recommended and presented to the state. We worked through a substantial review process, going so far as to, to produce hydraulic calculations and, you know, 25, 30% design drawings in order to demonstrate to the state the feasibility of the system. So it's been very well, very well vetted. And, and it is the preferred alternative, and what we would propose to begin after the 30-day period from the state. The wastewater plant also needs some work, is also factored into this. And from that, we looked at a number of different, different alternatives. So the do-nothing, which I mentioned, we looked at three which convert the plant to a biological process. So you're actually using bugs to digest the, the solid and liquid waste that come into it. the the solid and liquid waste that come into it. Um, three different types we looked at were sequencing batch reactor, um a moving bed biofilm reactor and an integrated fixed film activated sludge, which was our preferred um alternative. Uh, we did evaluate the the bulk transfer or something that's commonly called the green line. And we'll get into each of these. So the do nothing, um again, that's the lowest cost. I mean, it's the the easiest thing to do is to do nothing. Um, but again, you continue noncompliance, continued fines, ensures regulatory action, um and as such has a very high uh triple bottom line cost. Um, and so not the preferred alternative. Um, I don't want to get too far into weeds on on what these are. Um, but a sequencing batch reactor is a type of a biological process. Um, it would be able to meet the MPDS requirements. It would provide a hundred percent redundancy, which means that if you had to take down a portion of the plant in order to do repairs, you could do so um without endangering your your um your permit. Um, and it also treats a wide variation in flowwater characteristics because it's a batch process. It brings flow in and treats it then then releases it, brings it in, treats it, then releases it. Now, one of the liabilities with that is we'd have to actually build a temporary plant to do it. Um, it has a very high capital cost, has a high O and M cost. Um, it actually requires a number of additional structures. Um, it doesn't provide for a future growth or capacity, um and it has a higher sludge production uh because of the of the process that's used. Um, the third is a moving bed bioreactor. Um, and so this is a is a process where you have a basin that is filled with media and you have growth on the media that actually metabolize the the solid and liquid waste. And the benefit of that is that you have lower sludge production. So that's one of the benefits of it. Um, it would not require a temporary plant to be built. Um, it would provide for some future capacity. Um, it would give a hundred percent redundancy. And it is capable of meeting the MPDS requirements. It does have slightly higher capital cost and higher O and M cost, which is uh so it's very close to the preferred alternative, but still greater. And it also requires some additional structures because you have to be able to catch and maintain the media that's floating um in the in the wastewater. The selected alternative is called an integrated fixed film activated sludge process or an IFAS system. Um, it's a biological process. Um, it is similar to the moving bed process that I just spoke about, only the media that's in the basin is not free-floating. So it's it's fixed, which means you don't have to have the additional structures to catch the free-floating media and deal with it. But you have some of the same benefits of slower lower sludge production. You have lower O and M cost. You still have a hundred percent redundancy. You still have provides future capacity and you can see the difference um in 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 present worth. They're they're very, very tight. One of the benefits of this process is that it can be used in a small footprint. And so all of these processes would include having to build a plant somewhere else, which is is significantly more expensive than what we were looking at. Um, we always evaluate a bulk transfer option just because there are some cases where it is the best option. Um, here I do not believe that it is. Uh, so its benefits would be to take the the it would take the wastewater plant offline. You would eliminate the MPDS permit. Um, you would eliminate your your operations cost of the plant and you obviously would eliminate uh future NOVs from the plant. The liabilities are, it has a it does a high capital cost because of the distance uh that you're required to to get to the nearest wastewater plant, which the one that was looked at was the Spindale plant. Um, has a high O and M cost. You have three pump stations you have to maintain. Um, it also requires a perpetual dependence on, say, it was if it was Spindale, you are forever dependent on Spindale to receive your wastewater. Um, it places limiting capacities. Uh, basically Spindale would be able to dictate what Lake Lure could do. And it's important to note that that even though this system was actually designed, uh, there was no established interlocal agreement. And so um there there has never been uh any agreement on on where the system can go. Um, I calculate the present worth of the system ba- at eighteen million dollars, which is more expensive than the previous alternatives. And I want to point out that those costs have not been vetted or adjusted per inflation. They're from a a previous report. Um, so um in in addition to to being what I believe is not the best alternative, it is one of the more expensive. So uh funding and rates for phase one. So because of the magnitude of this project, we're gonna have to do it in phases. Um, both from a from a construction window um and from a funding standpoint. So what has currently been um uh been secured uh is a loan from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality uh called the State Revolving Fund or SRF Program. It's a series of low-interest loans um that are made to municipalities. We've secured twelve and a half uh million dollars and this loan has been secured since um twenty sixteen, I believe. So it's been it's been on the books for a while. You were granted a thirty-year term and some of that is because the the of the process we're using and the materials we're using are very long life. And so we can actually meet their 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 conditions, which are very stringent. It's very difficult to get thirty-year loan, but we've uh been able to do it. Uh, zero percent interest, uh principal forgiveness of five hundred thousand dollars. It does have closing cost of of ten thousand dollars and an annual debt service um of uh four hundred thousand dollars. The uh you can see the current rates for Lake Lure. Um, so these are the the twenty uh twenty and twenty twenty-one rates. Uh, total rate for five thousand gallons for water sewer be a hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's comprised sixty-four dollars for your water rate and ninety uh for the um for the sewer rate. Uh, funding for this process continues to be challenging and Lake Lure is um going down every available um avenue um with multiple agencies to to try to get funding for both this and um and the dam. Um, and so that the 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 engineering and the funding are both extremely challenging on this on this project because of the size of the size of the problem and because of of the smaller size of the of the town. So scope, what would phase one look like? So this is a preliminary look at at phase one and the the magenta line is what our goal is. Uh, principally, we're gonna start at the dam and the reason we want to start at the dam uh is because as we come by properties, if we start at the dam, we can actually, they can actually tie in and come off of the existing system. And so by starting at the dam, as we work away around the lake, we can actually take people off the existing system and remove them from the risk um associated with the existing system. Um, it's also from a from a construction standpoint, um you typically, when you're installing sewer, you typically start at the bottom and work your way up and and that lets you account for any kind of changes um that you find in in as you're installing the line. Um, and so basically, as we finish phase one, we reach a certain point and then we could pick up with the next phase from that point and and continue around the lake. Ultimately culminating uh by the municipal operations center. Um, and then the the city, the entire system would be able to be abandoned um in place. What we would like to do principally is as we um we do phase one and then at some point in the future, we come back and we start removing these existing manholes. So we're taking them out of service as we go and securing them. Phase one would also include the sewer access valve, which is under design now. Um, that would uh do double duty with the dam as a reservoir drain um as a safety measure that the state is is imposing, but it would allow us to bring the lake down further than is currently possible, which would give us more backshore uh to work with. Uh, we're also going to do manhole rehabilitation. Um, so the existing manholes that are there uh need to stay in service until we can uh till we can replace them. And so as a part of a midterm fix, um if we go in and we repair some of the manholes um and we line some of the manholes to to keep some of the leaks out, we can relieve the stress on the pump station behind the dam, which suffers from from sanitary sewer overflows during high-flow events. And we can also um relieve some of the pressure on the wastewater plant by by reducing the flow. And then at the wastewater plant, we're uh proposing to put in some additional measures that involve removal of of some of the heavy sand and grit that comes into the system and reworking the digester and some of the sludge handling system that's been a problem for uh for some time. Um, this is a breakdown. Uh, again, you can find this in the YRNE ID um of how we arrive at the twelve million five hundred. And our our goal as we start this project um is to use as much of the state uh loan as possible. And so if we have money, we'll be installing pipe. Um, and if we get more money, we'll install more pipe. So um that's that's our goal um is to to be aggressive in our installation. As far as the project as a whole, um, you can see this is the the GLS as a whole. Um, you have a a series of a perimeter system that goes around the lake. Um, we have two s- two lines that actually go under the lake uh from N forty-three right here. Uh, these would go under the lake and then and S twenty-seven here would actually go under the lake. Um, and what that enables us to do is is to prevent us from having to carry flow from uh from, say, the beach um all the way up to Rumbling Bald and back. And so that that allows us to to reduce the size of the pipe or do some of the construction cost. Um, and so in forty-three would actually be a pump station that would pump under the lake and then would continue gravity flowing from here uh behind the dam. The system would also eliminate the pump station behind the dam, so it would penetrate the dam at a much higher elevation. And we would run it until it would be able to gravity flow um to the uh to the wastewater plant. And the 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 plan of of replacing the dam is something that came about after the GLS. Uh, but we would be able to accommodate uh the dude that new dam location with the GLS system there. So um we're communicating with Schnabel and coordinating with them on exactly where they're designing the dam um so that we make sure it doesn't interfere with the GLS installation and vice versa. Um, at the wastewater plant, this is what the wastewater plant will look like. Right now you have one basin. Um, I would divide that basin into two trains and add a add a third train. Um, and that would provide you with some future capacity. Um, we would basically be building out the site. I mean, we would be putting um a a lot of structures in a small site. Um, but we'll be able to treat the flow and provide redundancy uh without moving the plant. Um, now this uh particular part of the of the project is the last one to be accomplished. Um, and as you'll see in a an upcoming slide slated in the year twenty thirty-four. Um, and so we have indicated to DOT and and they have agreed that um they're obviously potentially going to be changes in technology in the next decade. And so when it comes to this wastewater plant, um we will revisit the technology and see if the IFAS system is still the best one um that's available when uh when this when this work proceeds. I think you can all see this. I was planning on putting this up in the screen in in the uh uh in the in the room, but um you can see that the total cost for the whole system, including the work um to the wastewater plant, the capital cost is sixty-two million dollars. So this is a um certainly a um and an expensive system. And I have this here so everyone can uh can see it. And that's what's driving the phasing. Um, but you're installing about a hundred thousand feet of pipe by the time you go around the lake. So it's a it's a very, you're replacing, you know, seventy-four thousand feet with a hundred thousand feet because we can't go under the lake or through the middle of the lake. We have to go around it. So it's it is an expensive fix. Um, but it can be phased over time. Project schedule, um what we're planning um this winter is to begin the the manhole rehabilitation um and and do some other prep work um to get ready for next winter, where we'll actually be installing pipe. And we're phase one will begin. Um, and the next two winters, so the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four winter months will be um installing the the GLS system, beginning at the dam. And and working our way around. And as more money becomes available, um we'll get into a a basically a design during the spring and summer and and install during the winter uh for as long as the as we have funding. Um, and again, this is the this is the outlook. Um, and these are subject to change um with completion of phase one in twenty twenty-four and then every two years um attempting to to begin another phase with the with the GLS being complete in twenty thirty-two and the plant conversion being completed in twenty thirty-four. Um, but again, these are subject to change based on funding. And so hopefully we keep the we keep the funding uh with going. Um, but again, I'd like to thank you. Um, it's been an exciting project. Um, you can see the the questions you can submit uh on the the town's website under the the contact uh page. And in about a week or so, I'll answer all the questions in writing. Um, and those will be posted um along with the uh the minutes for this meeting. Um, and so once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to to work on the project and I'm looking forward to uh continuing now that we've gotten some of the regulatory hurdles hurdles out of the way.
Reese, thank you so very much. Just just to reiterate, if there are any additional questions that is there for a week, you're able to submit questions to Reese on that website and he will answer them. Um, so I think we are, um, is there anything else from any other questions from the council or any other discussion from our council in this public hearing? If not, then do I hear a motion to close our public hearing?
Madam Mayor, Mr. [inaudible].
And I'll second. Commissioner Bryant?
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
D'Orio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Uh, thank you. Then we unanimously have um a motion carries to close our public hearing. Uh, once again, we certainly thank Reese for this incredible presentation and all the incredible work that he and his and Lobella have done in conjunction with our other engineering firm Schnabel and certainly um I would be remiss if I did not say David D'Orio, Commissioner David D'Orio has played just a tremendous role in this. We thank him for his time and and his expertise. We will now move on to item six, which is the council liaison reports and comments. Um, we will start with um Commissioner Kilby.
So uh Lake Advisory Board met yesterday. I would have normally met week ago yesterday was Labor Day, so they met yesterday instead due to the holiday. That was a good meeting, a lot of good discussion. L A B has been working on my uh recommendation to bring to council for uh address safety issues for the lake due to speed of boats uh in addition to uh density. And so they have made a recommendation which will be uh presented to uh council. Uh, I'll I'll hold the details of that because I want to get the uh written explanation as to how they came up with what their recommendation is gonna be, but they that is prepared. And I'll get that uh put together so it can be presented uh at council meeting. A lot of people have done a lot of hard work in trying to uh take care of and make all the determinations. It's what's best for that. And so as as I said, it's all to meet safety needs and that uh recommendation will be forthcoming. Uh, ABC Board is not met. They meet next week. So I should have a bit of a report for that for next next month. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilby. Uh, Commissioner D'Orio?
This man, the U A B did not uh meet this this month and so they will meet next month because by then we're should have uh closer to the final design of what the uh proposed cell tower will look like and U A B will take a look at that and your recommendation.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, the uh zoning and planning board met on uh August seventeenth, Tuesday at nine thirty. Oh, there was really no official business to come before the board, but There was really no official business to come before the board, but Michael Williams updated us on and we had a discussion on home occupancy and special use permit procedures. There was update on the new cell tower and the and our new development and environmental review specialist, Rick Carpenter was introduced to the board. And that was about the extent of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryan?
Good evening. I was not present for LSAB and BOA with a prior engagement. The board meeting minutes have not come out from that yet, so I can report on those at a later date. Parks and Recreation met September the second. And, you know, we had a couple of big storms, so they were very busy. And thank you to Dean and Dana and to all of our Public Works folks for doing such a tremendous job getting everything they could out. One of the booms did break and they have repaired that since and are working on those. Again, we there is a little movement on the golf course and there is an NDA that's been signed with Attorney Morgan with a a development company to discuss the future of the golf course. From the meeting minute notes, it is still scheduled to close at the end of the year at this time. There is a pro golf event October 15th through the 17th. And there is a work day on Buffalo Creek Park coming up in two days on the 16th of September. The first one's already gone and passed. So Lakewood Flower and Bridge has a rare event up. They also have QR codes that people can enjoy and use. A lot of movement still there. And there is still, they're still working on plans for the open space Morse Park Plan. And there's a lot of discussion that comes along that. The Flower and Bridge is working on developing a yoga class. That's going to be kind of a one, one by one event, not a recurring at this time. That's still in development. And water samples are still coming together and they're still working those. Dana's been tremendously helpful there. Our next meeting is October the seventh.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. That is the end then of our council liaison reports and comments. If you will remember, if you're looking at the agenda, we have moved the public comments section to section 11. And also remind anybody, any more questions concerning the public hearing, remember, should be submitted in writing to the website for the next rather than the public comment. We will now move on to our consent agenda. We have removed the dredging plan from the consent agenda, so the only item that's left on the consent agenda is the approval of the August regular meeting minutes and the August 26 regular work group meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Thank you. Then the consent agenda is accepted unanimously. We have no unfinished business. We will move on to new business. The first item is the Chimney Rock Ridge Homeowners Association, Inc., requesting regrading street improvements. I will default Shannon either to you or to I'll default to you to let who know you'd like to present that.
Sure. So we have Steve Malito with us and other members of Chimney Rock Ridge with us this evening. So this was basically a request that was discussed with the board at the last town council work group meeting. And so they basically have pulled together some materials and would like to share those with council and basically have a request of town council. So Steve, if you're ready, happy for you to present.
Thank you very much for hearing us. I want to thank the mayor and the entire council and Shannon for the responsiveness that you've been to our concerns with the roadways down at the entryway to our neighborhood. Those roadways have been there for a long time. I have documents dating back to the original charter that shows that those roadways have been proposed to being a component of a town center since the foundation of the community. And those roadways have always been there and they've always provided right of way through a circulatory pattern around a proposed town center. As we can have Andy speak about the 20 year history of trying to develop that project. But it's been a longstanding project and highly desirable for the community to develop a commerce center down in that area between the municipal building and the inn. Now, to part of the in over those many, many years, one thing that's happened is that the park has proposed having an entry or exit on Proctor Road, which would present a high traffic volume to a very small road. And so we are requesting that the dirt roads that are there and be improved to merely being gravel. We're not asking for tarmac. We're not asking for a big infrastructure plan. The town manager has provided us with an estimate of the cost of that project. And our homeowners association has agreed to partner with the town into developing these roadways. And we're proposing half that we will contribute half to the cost of a fairly modest project. We think the project provides a benefit not only to our homeowners association, but also to the community at large. It will provide us with alternative means of ingress and egress to our community, which will bypass town functions that happen in that area, beach access. Currently, we're driving through a parking lot to get there. We get to bypass that parking lot. And it'll provide bypass for emergency services in case we need them during large events that happened at that in that area. It'll also provide general circulation for the citizens of Lakelore. Not only now, but in the future, if this town development ever happens, it'll certainly be very useful at that time to allow circulation through the central area of our town. It also, these right of ways have been there since the inception of our town. And we're merely trying to exercise our own right of way over these roads that have been marked as roads for almost 100 years now. Now, the one question when I originally presented this to the board in the last open meeting was why now? And there was, and it's a good question. I mean, why do we want it done now? And in that regard, I'd like to hand the mic over to James Ledgerwood. Because there was some concept that the park might not ever put traffic on this road. And I would like James to discuss what the park's plans are and what the possibility of dumping somewhere between a quarter million to a half a million cars a year into this part of town. Can we do that? James, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah. So why now is a good question. The state is looking at trying to fund the road. It is one of the proposed projects that we're hoping that would get approved in state budget. It does get approved, we could have money to actually connect that road to the park. If that's the case, it'll be a lot of designs and it would take, you know, who knows, a few years to get all that together. And the proposed, you know, master plan and our plan is to make it an exit to the park, so it would be dumping the public basically in that area. Now, that's all, of course, contingent on if the budget gets approved and if funding is approved, then that project could possibly move forward. If not, then we're kind of in that holding pattern, but it has been brought up and they are looking at trying to fund it. So why now to kind of get ahead of the game a little bit? I think it'd be a good idea improving any road for any any areas is good, I think. And if you've got, you know, a homeowners group that's willing to, you know, pay half to kind of get it up to a something more than just kind of a dirt road to give them better egress. I think it's it's a good idea to be ahead of the game, honestly on it. Of course, you know, if all that stuff did get approved, we would pull in Lakelore, all their plans and stuff. We talked to DOT, our designers, your all's designers, to try to come up with a way to connect that road to the town of Lakelore, the best possible manner for traffic, also for the public, you know, parking and for, you know, people who own property who live back there. Now, that's that's going to be a difficult task for all of us kind of to get together on the same page and who pays for what? You know, when it comes to that kind of stuff, I have no clue. But with the new road being a possibility, I think it is prudent that, you know, homeowners in the area and Proctor Road homeowners have always been leery of their easement and worried about a park entrance there as well as they probably should be. They have to deal with traffic all the time coming through there as is. So this this improvement would help them now and in the future. So that's that's pretty much all I have on that unless you guys have any questions.
Mr. Malito, do you have something more you'd like to say or do you want to open up questions? What do you want to do?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple more things and then we can open it up to questions. And so the benefit is that by by identifying and and improving these roads, we will set a framework so that if these two projects come into to bear, we will be able to identify, the town will be able to identify what the right of way is through this area and make the best possible use of of the right of ways that are already there or reconfiguring them so that we can get the traffic flowing in the best manner for the whole town. And identifying them now will set up the framework for that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both, James and I can lead to also, are there any questions or discussion from council members or or staff?
I'd just say that I think the proposal makes a lot of sense and is quite reasonable. And I'm certainly in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think that whole area has a lot of potential for the future, obviously, and having lived there for about six month period and right in the middle of where those streets that are being talked about, I think it'd be a great improvement for that area. From a safety standpoint, I think it would be a great improvement there as well for egress and everything. So it's a good idea.
If there's no other discussion, is someone interested in oscillating a motion to approve the chimney rock?
I'll make a motion.
Sensation request?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Chimney Rock Ridge Homeowners Association request regarding streets and street improvements as presented.
Commissioner Kilby, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Yuri, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
And the recommended motion passes unanimously to approve the Chimney Rock Ridge Homeowners Association request regarding street improvements as presented. Thank you very much, both of you for being here. We will move on then to the second item under new business, which is the tree removal request. And Shannon, once again, I'll defer to you on that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a project that I have not been directly involved in, but is Mike with us here this evening? Mike Williams, he's not. So just a just a brief summary, Firefly Cove POA and a community resident requested permission to remove a hazardous tree from the resident's yard. The tree is within the 995 lake boundary and requires approval of town council. Community development staff visited the site on August the 12th for the purpose of evaluating the removal request. Staff comments in addition to the recommendation set forth by the community development staff, Epperson Tree Service and approved tree service provider in Lakelore recommends the tree removal due to damage from Emerald Ash Borr beetles. And there was a conversation between Director Williams, Community Development Director Williams and property owner, and there are some attachments in here for your consideration. Comes recommended that the request be granted.
I need to make everyone aware that the tree is in my yard, so I will abstain from discussion and and voting unless anybody has a question for me.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Are there any questions or is there any discussion or questions from any of the rest of the council?
None for me. It looks like a very straightforward case. Yeah.
Do I do I hear a a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve removal plan as presented to town council.
All right, seconded.
Bryant, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Yuri, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or abstain?
Thank you. Then those voting unanimously approved the community development staff recommendation that the town council approved the removal of the hazardous tree located 123 Firefly Cove. We will now move on to item C, which was added to your agenda. Item C is our dredging plan. I'm going to defer to Dean Givens and and possibly Commissioner D'Orio. But Dean will will begin with you, if you will.
Yes, ma'am. We have submitted the 21, 22 dredge plan for this year. It's in your packet. And I believe Commissioner D'Orio, we've worked, I've worked with him quite a bit on this and trying to get the scope of work down a little bit better and I'll refer to him at this point.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dean. Olivia, can I share screen? Can you give me that permission?
You should be able to, I believe.
Okay, I'm going to put it up. Can you see it?
Yes.
All right. So one of the things when we took a look at this year's plan, this this particular slide is from a brief that was presented by three flow dynamic engineers or specialists in in flow presented to town council February, and it depicts pretty much the area that we're looking at for dredging for 21, 22. And I thought it was important to get the the foundational elements of of the 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 dredging plan brought to us from this briefing that that tells us exactly what to do for dredging, serve greatest bang for the buck with the limited dollars that we have. But also gives us an idea of where and and to the folks of Lakelore, where we're going to be dredging and how we're going to be doing it. So what you're looking at side is really the what we're calling the river inlet. It's not really the river, the actual lake actually but we call that the river channel on the north side of that. That's that that red area which shows the higher flow. So the river comes down in that that protrusion to the left is Morse Park. And the very tip of that we call the east end of Morse Park. Just below that would be the Marina Inlet. And as you go further to the right, you see the the eddies that are associated with Firefly Cove. The the flow engineers took a look at the speed that the sedimentation comes into the lake. And and they they've told us that the vast majority of sedimentation that comes in the Lakelore comes in by by this river, even though there's 42 other streams and inlets, the majority of sedimentation, particularly during storm events, comes in via via the river. And so the the real key to to dredging and keeping this entire area deep enough so that we can navigate all waterborne vessels. The key is trying to control the flow of the river coming into the into the lake. There's a there's a couple of of ways to do that. But the most efficient way from the engineers was to create an area just to the east end of that Morse Park and make that area deeper. So if can you can you see my cursor? Does everyone see the cursor movement?
Yes.
Right, right about here on that river inlet into just the extremities of Firefly Cove, this area right here is absolutely crucial to dredge. Because what happens is the flow then slows down to the point where the sedimentation falls out in that area and very down into the main channel. Once the sedimentation goes into the main channel, very expensive, very difficult, if if even possible to get after it and it just keeps filling in the lake. So the concentration area is is in this area right here. And we have to constantly dredge that area to keep it as deep as possible, which gets the flow of the water down less than one centimeter per second. And then the sedimentation falls out and And then the sedimentation uh falls out in that area. You'll know when the water's down, you can take a look out there, you'll see that a lot of the sedimentation builds up in this area. And I call this, this area over here to the right, the Firefly Plateau. You see where the sedimentation is building up in that area. So this is the focal point um of, of the dredging plan going from twenty-one to twenty-two. Now, these channels, um particularly the river inlet channel, the Marina Channel and the access into Firefly Cove also has to uh, uh be maintained clear so that folks can get their boats into each one of those areas. So there, there'll be channel work into Firefly, channel work into the Marina area, though that's the least of our concerns. And then uh some channel work along Morse Park going towards Town Hall uh on the riverside. It gets really rocky at the upper end anyway, but we have to uh make sure that at least we can keep that so that boats can, can navigate. So this information was brought into the dredging plan to tell people that that's basically where the, where the dredging uh is going to be. And Tim Edwards and the dredge right now is located right off of that east end of Morse Park. Uh, he'll run on that area hydrolically until the, the water drawdown period on November first. So hydrolically, which is the only way to get at this area right here, he'll be working from uh post Labor Day to uh November first. So we're in that, we're in that area right now. By the way, the other thing in the plan that we um suggest, recommend, we put in there is the dredging season um really extends from Labor Day to Memorial Day to keep uh the dredging from occurring during the peak of our recreation sea uh season and to help out local businesses as well that would be, that depend on that area. So we're trying to keep it in the shoulder season. But Labor Day to November first would be waterborne or hydraulic dredging in this area. Uh, and then the, the sedimentation traveling by pipe to our sedimentation pond that's in this upper area. We're trying to find a second location for the sedimentation uh drop area. Uh, and we're working uh to get a permit, actually through Lobella to get that done. That, that permit has not been secured yet, so right now uh that sedimentation will be delivered to its uh um traditional locate area right here. After November first, the lake drawdown begins and that gives us a couple of options. We can combine hydraulic dredging in this area with some mechanical, if particularly in Firefly Cove. If that area dries out enough, we may be able to get some equipment in there to take out some material. If not, then we'll continue to do as much hydraulic as we can in this area to get rid of the sedimentation that's on that plateau area. Right now, um, that, that area is only about three, three and a half feet deep. Um, if it gets any shallower, then no boats will pass. Matter of fact, right now, Lake Lure tour boats are, are bottoming out in this area right here. Be shallow it is brought to us by the storm, uh Hurricane Ida that we just had. And then estimate, estimates are that it filled in about a, uh another foot um in that area. So after November first, it'll be primarily hydraulic, maybe some hydraulic mechanical, which we call excavation all the way uh during the drawdown period uh into the spring. Once we get up to full pond again uh in the February, March timeframe, um not quite exactly sure when that will be, but then we'll start hydraulic dredging again that may extend all the way to uh to uh Memorial Day. So that's, that's the general plan that dredge is going to be out there. Um, the uh Tim Edwards and Lake Operations has requested uh permission to dredge on the weekends um in order to get this material and take advantage in the off season. I recommend that we do that. Um, there's, we've earned seventy-three thousand dollars of state grant money available to us. So, so there's funding available and we can get on it uh right away. By the way, we expect the same amount of money to uh, to come to us um, um next year. So that's the essence of the dredging plan. Those are edits to the plan that you saw and was presented in the package. We'll get those incorporated in there and uh I shift that over to any questions or to council for final approval.
I have a question.
Either for Dean or for Commissioner D'Orio.
I have a question. Uh, Commissioner D'Orio, do you have the edits to the dredging plan available?
Yes, and I will uh, the town council has seen those and I will submit those. It, it's the last one that was presented uh for editing to your office and to Dean. With the exception of the last uh request from Dean, which, which was to allow for weekend uh dredging.
Uh, is there any way we can post that document?
Yep.
Okay.
The uh last request you received from me on the weekend dredging, uh I didn't put the date in here, but uh if possible, I'd like that to run through November first of Lake Drawdown, so between now and, and, and November one.
So while Commissioner D'Orio is finding that document, Dean, could you read your addition that you would like to have added?
Yes, I can. It is uh, uh that I request that the town dredge on Saturdays and Sundays in the main channel around the mouth of the river and around the mouth of the bay and out towards Firefly Cove where tour boats are dragging bottom uh as a part of the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two dredging strategy plan. Dredging the additional sediment uh after the storms we recently have. Uh, and the grant monies that need to be spent by December thirty-first are reasons for this request.
And, and so your caveat on that would be that's through November?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dean, I have a question. Why would you want to limit it to November since we're getting into the down season into the winter months? Uh, not that you would, you know, maybe you wouldn't need to do it, but but wouldn't it be good to have that option all the way up until the spring?
Yes, sir. It could, it would. But my, my line of thinking was is that the hydraulic dredging is where we're trying to get caught up right now and then we would deal with the excavation style depending on the lake drawdown.
Okay, the, I, I would, I would support it if you wanted to uh amend that at all, if you um, uh, if you do, just say so.
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll go ahead and amend that. I'd rather have the more time to get things done. So I'd amend that from uh Saturday and Sundays from now uh through the spring of our dr- of the dredge season.
Yeah, and uh, and uh Commissioner Moore, I would, I would fully support that too because the, the backend of the drawdown may change, but we know our start date and I think that's a very strategic move right there. Absolutely. And um, you know, the Lake Lure Tours has three um boats that have uh inboard motors and they have one that's an outboard motor that we approved um for tours. And that one also has been touching, touching dirt. And uh, it's a, it's a, it's a strategic move that's necessary to make sure that uh next season is appropriate for our residents uh and for commercial operation, including um Rumbling Bald and Lake Lure Adventure Company.
Dean, question. Will that uh be something that will help us in making sure we get the money spent we have to spend by the end of the year?
Yes, sir. That's one of the main driving factors.
That's a no brainer.
And just so that anybody who's listening knows, we, this six hundred or six hundred fifty thousand dollar grant has to be, we have to use it up by December thirty-first. Am I right, Dean?
That is correct.
And then hopefully we'll get the same grant again next year. If we come up short, it just costs us this year, it could possibly cost us in years to come as well.
Exactly.
So Dean, just, just to clarify your request, um, what you're, what you're recommending council do is adopt the document that we have in front of us, which incorporates some of the additions and edits uh, uh being propounded by Commissioner D'Orio in addition to your latest request. Uh, and that is an addition that allows uh dredging to take place on the weekends.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this plan.
Is there a second?
Mr. Kilby, I say.
All right. All in favor?
Mr. Brian, aye.
Uriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Thank you. Then uh, the recommendation is approved unanimously uh to approve the twenty-twenty twenty-one, twenty-two dredging strategy as presented. And thank you so much, everyone, for all the hard work we've, this is a culmination of lots of um strategizing and, and considerations. So we thank you for that. We will move on then to item number E. Uh, excuse me, to item number D, I beg your pardon, um which is the um approval of resolution number twenty-one dash oh nine dash one four, which is um resolution, the town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, declaration of official intent to reimburse. Um, who would like to, if anyone, address that?
I'll, I'll give it a whirl, but I think Reese is with us as well, Madam Mayor.
Good. Reese, would you like to address that since you crafted it?
Let me just start.
Yes, ma'am. Reese also. Shannon, I'll just briefly um explain what this is. So the, the state of North Carolina um in an effort to promote the, the health of its municipal system, set up a program called an AI A Grant. It's Asset Inventory Assessment. It answers three questions. What do I have? Where is it? And what condition is it in? And so through this, we can get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that can be used to do uh pipe condition assessment, flow monitoring, smoke testing, location, et cetera um of Lake Lure's uh sewer uh system. And I want to share my screen once again. And so what you're looking at, uh, as, as part of our preparation for the ERNE ID, we had a hydrographic survey done of the lake. So this is a survey boat that went out and maps part of the bottom of the lake. The colors that you see represent depths and, and what you'll note is you can see features on the lake bottom representing uh straight lines. Example, this feature here, um, these features across here. And what those actually are, um, are the existing pipes along the bottom of the lake. So they, they create a disturbance on the lake bottom that the survey equipment is able to pick up. And so I have a proposal uh from the surveyor to do the entire lake. The grant would more than pay for, um, would pay for that survey and then the remainder could be used uh in working with, with David Arrowood to do smoke testing, CCTV, um, et cetera of, of other portions of your sewer system. Uh, the benefit is uh right now, if we had a breach in the system, not only do we not know where the breach is, we don't even know where the line is to look for it. So this would actually tell us where the pipe is. Um, so that if we did have an issue, we would at least know where the, the pipe is to look for it. Um, the other thing it would do, it would assist with dredging because it would give us contours of the entire bottom of the lake. Um, and Dean Givens could, could use those um to, to target dredging operations in, in applicable coves and, 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 and areas of the lake. Um, and this can be repeated every three years. So every three years you can reapply. Um, and so we could, you know, after some major dredging operations, we could reapply in the future and do another survey. And then we could determine how successful we've been in our dredging operations. You could also uh use it as a, as a gauge point to determine um how much sediment is coming into the lake from year to year because you can, uh, this is a way to direct measure the lake bottom. So there, there are a lot of benefits to this. Um, you are in no way uh if the, if the state uh comes along uh in February and announces that, that you are recipient, you are no in no way bound to receiving that money. Uh, it would be subject to a, a closing cost um around fifteen hundred dollars and a uh, a matching uh fee that's based on some economic uh markers. And so your, your matching fee would be in somewhere of say five to, to ten percent. Um, but that can be matched by uh, by work. And so the public work staff and I could go out and, and, and self-perform some of the work and those hours and materials would go towards the matching fee. Um, so um, it's a, it's a system that, that I've utilized successfully numerous times. Um, you know, it, it, at a, at a five percent match or a ten percent match, um, you know, you don't have to pay the remaining ninety-five or, or ninety percent back. So I think it's, it's well worth it. It's a good program. Um, I need to turn in the application by the end of this month. Uh, and so with your approval, um, given all the work we've done with the SOC, with the tech memo, with the ERNE ID, I think I need a couple of days to pull the application together. Um, and so with your approval, um, we will meet the September thirtieth deadline. And uh, we'll know February of next year. Um, if we receive it, the surveyor is lined up and um they're ready to go. And so provided we have the funds, um, we can, uh, we can initiate the survey. Reese, I'd just like to. And if you have any, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I'd just like to add that because of the uh in-kind possibility that we can put a number on the work that we do and that can serve as our match. And when you look at the benefit, this is a necessary uh project that we can get tremendous amounts of value out of in multiple ways. Basically, the cost is very small, but the benefits are huge and run in many different directions. So this is a, this is a fantastic opportunity for us that Reese has pulled together and presented.
Reese, thank you so much. Are there any questions for Reese from anyone?
Certainly. I think I may have one with the, with the grant. Yeah, with the grant, Reese, and thank you. This is incredible. Um, you know, uh, your uh, uh drawdown schedule, the every other year model. Um, if we were to be granted this in the next year, when we don't have a drawdown scheduled, um, the, your topography would still remain the same and we'd still be eligible even if we are, you know, adjusting lake levels?
Yeah, correct. So this is, this is run through the same program because the, the, the financial infrastructure of the SRF program um was such that it was, it was more beneficial for the, for the state to run this program through the SRF. Uh, but it does not relate to the SRF. Um, you can do both. You can do neither. Um, you can do either one. So it's, 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 it's done by the same people, but it's unrelated. Um, and then also it's, it's better for the, the uh boat. If there's water. And so this would actually take place after the lake had been brought back up. Um, so that the boat can get back into some of the coves and areas. Um, we, we did this um while the lake was down and we had to put a drone on the boat that could take off from the boat and, and actually fly along the areas where there wasn't enough water. So um if we did this after the lake was brought back up, it'd be actually be more efficient than what we did um last winter.
Reese, question. Um, as far as resolution goes, what we see right here basically is what we would get, but you're talking about the entire lake bottom.
Correct. Correct. You, you get this over the entire lake. And so the, the way this works, if you pass the resolution tonight, I submit along with the application, when the state notifies us of their intent to fund, we would have a second resolution to accept their terms. And so at that point, you can look at the terms that the state is offering and decide whether or not this is in the best interest for the town. So like I say, this, this in no way binds you to accepting the, the, the terms that the state puts forth.
Uh, if, is there any other discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I move that we.
You can go ahead, David, if you'd like. I'll second.
Madam Mayor, I move that we uh approve resolution number twenty-one zero nine tac one four as.
All right. I hear a second.
Mr. Brian, second.
All in favor?
Brian, aye.
Uriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Uh, then the council unanimously uh approves um the uh resolution, uh town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, declaration of official intent to reimburse. And thank you so much, Reese, for, for finding that for us. You're, you're always looking out for our best interest and we appreciate that certainly. Uh, we will now move to the final item that we have on um, under new business, which is a discussion in the selection of a search firm um for the purpose of selection of new town manager. And I know everyone has received uh those, those proposals uh that William uh sent out. And thank you so much, William, for all the work that you have done and has had an opportunity to review them. And I'm ju- I'm going to default to you, uh, William, um, with anything that you would like to add.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the board asked me to go uh about the, the uh task of getting in touch with and speaking to and inviting. getting in touch with and speaking to and inviting proposals from the three search groups or firms that had identified as having a, a great deal of experience helping in the recruitment process. We'll do a very brief summary of, of the three, all of which have submitted proposals. The first one that came in, and that was the hard copy that I brought to your boxes down at Lake Lure. It was from Renee Narlock and Associates. Renee, I spoke with her at length, that she's got over twenty-five years' experience in assisting governments, local governments, and private firms that search for executive level employees. Forty-plus states, they've done this in, including a fair number of searches in, in North Carolina. And the cost of that was twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, is her fee, or the firm's fee. She estimated five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in cost. Most of that's advertising, doing background checks, on finalist and that sort of thing, for all three of them. Mercer Group is in some sort of limbo right now. Apparently, the, the older Mr. Mercer has passed away. I guess you all read that in the supplemental. This would actually be Mercer Group Associates, which is a group of some of the folks that worked for Mercer Group. And my contact was Ellis Hankins. Some or most of you may, may have heard of him. He was the executive director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities from ninety-seven to two thousand fourteen. And since then, has been in, both in private practice and working with Mercer Group and now Mercer Group Associates, doing searches, assisting municipalities and doing the searches for executive level employees. Their fee is eighteen thousand five hundred, estimated forty-five hundred in expenses. And he, he's currently practicing with Broall Firm. That's some, some of you may know the firm I practiced with up until two thousand fourteen. I just want to say, you know, for the record, that I have no financial or otherwise interest in that firm. In fact, I, I learned just fairly recently that Ellis had affiliated with them. He's practicing more or less part-time and doing this other recruitment work. The number three, Raftellus. The Novak Group was the one I started searching for, is the one identified, and they merged with Raftellus. The contact, I spoke with Catherine Tuck Parish, spoke with her a couple of times. Their fee would be twenty-eight thousand three hundred dollars. And I was impressed with all three. They all suggest fairly similar methodologies of how they would go about assisting the town to identify candidates and, and to, to that would be appropriate for Lake Lure. I don't, I wasn't prepared. I don't know if you want me to, but I wasn't really prepared to, to suggest one to you. But I will if I may. But I was impressed with all three, and I don't think you could go wrong with, with any, any of the three.
William, would you rate them all pretty much about the same?
I would rate all the proposals pretty much the same. Yes.
Yeah, well, if that.
I don't know how you pick, really.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, if, if we don't have one that's standing out head and shoulders, or even slightly above the rest, then it seems like we would go with the one that offered us the best price.
And that, the best, the best price would be Mercer Group Associates, Ellis Hankins.
Is that the, the guy that worked with the League of Municipalities?
That's the one. Yes.
Yeah, well, that's my own comment. I'll, I'll let somebody. I'll be gone. You, David, you and Patrick will be working with him and Carol, of course. But, you know, y'all, whatever, whichever one you guys want is okay with me.
Would anyone else like to? I know what everybody's had. And once again, William, thank you so much for all the work that you've done on this and, and forgiven us those snapties. Would anyone else like to offer an opinion?
I just have one question for William. Each one kind of will react to this and have, has kind of their own timeline. Did you get any sense that one could move more quickly than the others, or are they all about the same, you think?
I think Renee Narlock and Associates and Mercer Group, I, I spoke, I spoke more at length with them. It, it took me a while to get to the person I needed to be talking to with Raftellus due to the merger with Novak Group. But I certainly, with Renee Narlock and Associates and Mercer Group Associates, they seem to be ready to hit the ground running. I, I don't. Renee, she travels all over, and then her firm does searches nationwide pretty much. And so does the other, certainly Mercer Group. I don't know much, I don't know Mercer Group Associates. How long that's existed exactly? About a year, I think. But but I don't know if there'd be any advantage, since Ellis lives in Raleigh. I mean, they're, they're, they fan out all over, and then they work, you know, nationwide, as I said, for the most part. So I don't really know how to answer that. I think either one of them, I'm comfortable saying, is ready, prepared, and has resources to
To go, to start?
To, to jump right into it fairly quickly. Probably all three of them.
Any other questions or discussion?
I, I do, yes. I was, you know, as I was looking through their, their profiles. Narlock really has a, a pretty wide swath of folks that they've pulled from. And, you know, you have a lot of areas that are specific to natural disasters, other elements. You're talking Florida, Texas, some other locations, you even into Wichita, Kansas, and several others that definitely, you know, have to be very adept at dealing with specific elements of natural disaster pieces, but also dealing with not only large-scale city production, but like a small county like York County, South Carolina, which is my family's hometown. It's a pretty small hometown location. So they have a very good, Norlock has a very good adaptation of soliciting the right people based on the demographics, the population density, and other elements that really come into play, including police officers, CEOs, executive directors, county managers, health department, and, you know, sustainable development. That came to mind for me, Public Works Director, Human Resources. So they really, they've done client references that run kind of the full run of our small community that have run the gamut of all types of city and townships of our size and then those that are much larger. And it really stood out to me based on their client profile. And it really was my, my top choice, so.
All right. Commissioner Kilby, do you have any thoughts or discussion?
No, I pretty much agree with what the group said and what William said. They all three seem very qualified. And initially, my comment, my conversation with William, he was impressed with, with the first group, Narlock. And so I, I, I think we can't go wrong. Patrick has some great points with, you know, his summary that he has. So I think we're, we're good with any of them. And again, I agree with what Commissioner Moore said. You know, Patrick and Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Byron are going to be part of the group that probably will get down the final decision process. So I'm, I'm willing to go support whichever one is, that is determined to be the favorite.
All right, I, I tend to agree. I, I think they're all good, and we're very fortunate to have three good ones. You're not often in that, in that position, to be honest with you. But, you know, I do, I do feel from looking at it and that, that it's possible with, with Narlock, they might be a little bit more focused. The Mercer Group just seems to be involved in, in transition right now. And it may not affect it at all, but also seem to be involved in a lot of different things other than, than the search firm business. So I, I think that's certainly a recommendation, in my, in my opinion, for Narlock.
I would, I would like to add a big thank you to William. He's just put a lot of work into this. Appreciate what he's done in putting all this together for us.
He certainly has. He absolutely has. Is there, is there any more, does anyone else have any more thoughts or, or, or more, any contributions before we make a decision? Are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think we're there. I, I move that we select, town council select the Narlock Group as the appointed firm for town manager search. And next step, and start with the contracting process, one step at a time. I, I move that we select the Narlock Group.
Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Bryant will second that motion.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Then the selection of the the selection of the Renee Narlock and Associates Search Firm to begin the the search for new town manager has been approved unanimously by the council. And we will move forward in, in the next step. And once again, all of us, William, would like to thank you. It took us very little time to make a decision based on the things that took you a lot of time to do. So we certainly appreciate you making that possible for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to add. The very first step will be signing a contract with, with the firm. And I'll, of course, review that. She was most likely sent it directly to me. And I wonder if the council could also give the, the mayor the authority to sign that based in consultation with me, so that we can get this started without the need to approve it, you know, have a special meeting or something to approve it.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, we normally would have to do an appropriation on the contract, but I move that we give the mayor the authority to sign and to approve appropriations as necessary to, to sign the Narlock Group for this task.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Bryant will second that motion.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
Then the motion to give the mayor the authority to sign and appropriate the funds necessary to sign this contract passes unanimously. I do know that, as William and I were talking about this over the last week, you know, we will probably be having a, a number of, of special meetings to address all the different steps that are involved in this, particularly in the beginning. So we can all look forward to that. So we will move forward with that, first the contract, and then move forward after that. We, that is everything that we have listed under new business. We will now move to our segment on public comment. Once again, just to refresh your memory, if there's still anyone out there, if you would like to make a public comment, once again, reserving comments or reserving questions on the ERNE ID to be submitted to Reese in writing through the, the website. But any other public comments, you are welcome to make at this time. Remember that they are to be limited to five minutes or less. And it is, it is a time to make a public comment. It is not a venue actually for discussion. If you will remember the tutorial that Olivia very nicely gave to us about pushing your, raise your hand. If you will find that button, if you wish to make a comment and click on it, Olivia will recognize you. So I'm going to pretty much turn the logistics of this over to you now, Olivia.
Thank you. And I can, I realize I can actually mute and unmute people. So if you guys will just raise your hand. But I do see one here for Greg Gardner. You look, I think you're unmuted already. So if you want to give me your address, then go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Olivia. And thank you, council, for giving us this opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mayor Pritchett for her reaching out to me about having a prayer with regards to the high holidays with the Jewish faith. Deborah and I moved here four years ago. We've felt nothing but inclusion from the community, and we've been welcomed with open arms, and we've made some true lifelong friends here. And we're thankful for that. We're thankful that the mayor asked, reached out to me and asked me to provide that for you. Secondly, Deborah is the chairperson for the upcoming Pause for the Cause fundraiser, which some of you may be attending. She asked me to let you know that due to the rise in the Delta variant and COVID, that they would require that anybody who is attending to wear a mask, excuse me, and they will be temperature checking just as precaution, so that it doesn't turn into a super-spreader event. So if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out to Deborah or myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have anyone else, Olivia?
Not that I see.
All right. Well, if there are, if there are no, there is no one else who would like to make a public comment, and of course, we always welcome it, then we will move into our last item, which is our closed session. So do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
Madam Mayor, I move that in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three, that we move into closed session for attorney-client privilege, which leads to legal claims.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Bryant, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Duriel, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Or aye.
And unanimously, we have moved to move into closed session. I know you will need a few moments, Olivia, to make sure that only those people who are necessary to be in this closed session are still online. So would the council like to take a five-minute break while Olivia gets us ready to have the closed session?
Good idea.
Sure.
Good idea.
Yes.
And so we are scheduled for a council work session at eight thirty. Is that correct?
If that's the wishes of the board, yes.
Or do we have items that will need to be discussed for that?
That's fine. I mean, if we, we don't have to have one, but just want everybody to know we do if.
Well, the original, original purpose of the meeting was to make sure you guys are getting good conversation, good coverage
Right.
regarding the issues. If, if there's some hot topics, we can schedule those for this meeting. If you feel good about where we are, we don't have to have the meeting. So it's totally.
Exactly. So, so what's the feeling of the council?
From my, from my perspective personally, if, because we've directed William to, to talk about this contract with, with, with Narlock. It's a couple of weeks out. He may have time to negotiate with them and then see where their stipulations lie, because we'll have to give a final approval on that. And then maybe there's a few other items that may come, come. And then maybe there's a few other, uh, items that may come, come to light. That's the only one that comes to mind at the moment, so.
So that's a vote in favor of having it then for you, Patrick?
For me personally, yes, yeah.
Okay. Well, it is on the schedule, just so everybody knows about it. It, you know, it, it doesn't ever happen to materialize if we come up without having everything, but I just want to make everybody aware that it is on the schedule.
It's eight thirty on the 29th, right?
That's, yeah, that, I mean, it could be anytime. That's traditionally when we've had that working being.
Commissioner Diorio, is there something you wanted to say about that?
No, no, no. I was just, uh, you know, there's, there's the things that are out there right now are the, the budget line items that are, that are coming to fruition and that'll be interesting. Update on the Narlock Group because we're going to get a sense hopefully by then, that's a couple of weeks of a timeline. And then, you know, that may drive us to, to try to pursue some other things. And the third thing that's going on is an update on the legislation and the potential design for the cell tower. So I think there's enough out there and I think, I think it'll be a good meeting.
Yeah, I agree with that. So let's just go ahead. Everybody put that on your agenda, eight thirty on the 29th.
What I ask you guys to do, if, if you have some hot topics that you want to have addressed, send those to me as soon as you can. We'll make sure we have the folks and material lined up.
Will that be, uh, a lot down at town hall?
I think so. No one usually comes to that, do they, except us? Uh, how, what do y'all want to do? Do you want to do it on Zoom or do you want to do it in person?
Uh, would, I'd rather do it in person, personally.
Me too.
Yeah, I think it's, since it's just us.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, there's no public coming to it. So it would be, it would be in person at town hall at eight thirty on the 29th.
Obviously could come to it, but you were saying that typically you don't have anyone, right?
Yeah, they could come. Typically, they don't. You're absolutely right. They could come. But I mean, I think if someone did come, and then there have been, there certainly have been some people who came, that came to the last, but not as many people come and we could spread them out easily.
Exactly.
Um, if there's no other business, then there is none on our agenda. Do I hear a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Uh, Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Four, aye.
Uh, then we stand adjourned.
Thank you, Olivia.
All and thank you.
Olivia, awesome job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We zoom right through that, Olivia.
Yeah, there was not as much, uh, comment as I thought. So I guess that was.
Yeah, I was surprised.
People actually just got tired of waiting, to be honest.
There's a lesson in that. What a great strategy. What a great, just keep talking and it just goes well.
They just give up. I agree with you. Cause there were a lot of people who had said they wanted to come in and I think they were eating dinner by that. So.
I mean, my great daughter, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I come for dinner for me.
Meetings for, for your entire life. So thank you so much. And thank you for showing everybody about the hands up. That's going to be useful in the future. So you're good.
Anytime.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Not at all.